At this time, it is my pleasure to call your November 2024 meeting of Hanover Council Order. I request that we all stand in unison, recite our beloved Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll follow that with a brief moment of silence.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Secretary Felix, assistance calling your role, please.
Mr. Bob?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Fong?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lookabo?
Here.
Mr. Ricard?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rob?
Here.
Solicitor Schultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman? Secretary Felix? Junior Counsel Cronister?
Here.
Junior Counsel Day?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. At this time, for the record, I'll acknowledge that there was not an executive session held between finance last week and this evening's meeting. We'll open it up for the first segment of public comment. Grace Muller.
Grace Muller, have you memorized my address yet?
No.
Jeez. 357 Centennial Avenue. I'm in Darlene's Ward. Okay, I know I have to be quick. Three little things first that we could finish, I could sneak in. One, just to tell you know, the meet and greet is on everyone's mind. I have hearing so many chipping about that. Of course, no one knows what ward they're in. I don't know how they don't know it because of the way they vote, but I'm bringing my little map in the car with me now and showing people. I think it's a riot. We got invited to sing at the market by our very gracious mayor and Margie and Chad and Matt, and that is just the most wonderful thing in the world because everyone, the seniors are all very happy. Sing at the market, come on, this is gonna be fun. We sing. Anyway, they solved this, they stopped a crisis by inviting us. Then the other big thing that you need to know about and try to help with support is that, because everyone's very excited about this too, we're gonna be able to do for the National Day of Service, January 18th, the day is early 20th, but Saturday afternoon, we're gonna do service at the market. And Curtis is thinking of all sorts of things to do, and if you know volunteer or in Hanover, it's 90% seniors, so he promised me they'll all be senior friendly. Okay, that's the, oh, and you two? We are starting a teen center in Hanover, which is gonna be really big, and we've just had the first meeting.
A what center?
Teen center.
Ah.
Because the teens don't have enough to do around here that aren't playing sports. So, and that's not my bailiwick, it's, it's, well, I don't know whose it is. We all are in it. We're jumping up and down about it. It's gonna be great. Okay, now here's, here's the, the problem. Hanover has changed a lot over the last few years, and I think a lot of it is a result of what Pastor, I'm trying to talk fast. Pastor, Pastor Mike Brosman from First Church, he, he's created this think tank that a lot of you, lot of you go to even, and that's the Hope for Hanover, and his, the whole principle, we have over 100 members, the mayor's a member, I don't know who else is, everyone comes sometimes. It's based on the, the principle of following Jesus and emulating Him by serving as He served. The last two years, I've been upset by the lack of any traditional Christmas carols being sung at Main Street Hanover as Christmas caroling in the square. Isaac explained to me that people complained about music with any religious connotation, which is why, you know, something, seeking to solve, to solve the problem, I went to the new director of Main Street Hanover and tried to tactfully, I'm not usually very tactful, explain the problem and thought we'd agree that I've got a professional chorister to lead us, and we're gonna sing more traditional, traditional Christmas carols, as well as Hanukkah and Kwanzaa music, which is what I've always done with Christmas caroling, so it's not just Christians. I had advertised that widely, and our senior group was gonna do it, and then at Hope for Hanover last week, Isaac announced that he was doing it, and he was directing it, and it would be all secular music, and I went, oh, shoot. But it was no problem, because the mayor and Margie solved that problem. But since then, and I know, I know several of Colin Darlene as well, and I've probably heard from close to a dozen people who, first, and I only tell them what I've been told, that they felt Main Street Hanover was a very woke, and their ideas were not representative of the views of the citizens of this borough, reminding about how fourth of us are seniors. That's extrapolating from the last sentence, but it's close. In fact, these, the people who've talked to me, they just think it's ludicrous to be prohibited to sing Christ's name when celebrating his birth, and that's how it was presented, that we can't have any songs with Christ's name in it. I talked to Darlene, and I called some people I knew and asked them if they would come, so some of my friends are here to share. So you know, more people share this views, because they, they, the people I know who are in favor of us being able to sing all these songs, I, I, I know they're Christians by their actions. I have no idea what church they go to, or if they go to church, that doesn't matter. They're not happy that our town is being represented, but what they feel is a very woke organization. And my understanding is, it's your organization, Main Street Hanover, is that correct?
No.
I mean, it is run by you? Oh, it is not run by you?
No.
It is played for by you.
Pardon?
Well, okay, I, that, I, in any case, it, it seems to be uniformly presenting a very woke attitude that does not coincide with, I think, a lot of, what I believe is to be the majority of the city. Thank you.
Yeah. Bill?
Thank you.
Bill, may, I, I just wanna speak on this for two minutes. I did talk with Grace, and apparently there were 16 songs selected for, by Main Street through whatever, and not one carried the name of Jesus. The only thing I would remind of people here that you, that is being forgotten, you ask somebody Merry Christmas, well, what are the first six letters in Christmas?
Christmas.
It's Christ. And Santa Claus would not exist had it not been for Saint Nick. And that was followed by, and gifts were given because of the wise men that visited the stable of Bethlehem. But I think it happened a long time after that, but he got gifts of Gold, Frank, and Sansomur. And then Saint Nicholas came, and those gifts were given in representation of the wise men. So, what, I did talk to Mariah, Bill, and she is adding two religious songs to the 16 that they will be singing downtown. She said one will be Silent Night, and the other will be Hark the Herald Angels. But since I represent my ward, and I represent agnostics, and atheists, and Christians, and Jews, all of you in my ward, then I think we should have a fair display of the songs that are being sung. And really, if we're gonna have 16 without the name of Jesus, I think we could well afford 50% of those songs to honor Christ. I rest my case. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, we next, Robert Holt, wants to address council.
Thanks, Mr. President. Robert Holt, P.O. Box 1131, Hanover, Pennsylvania. Mr. President, I rise tonight to say thanks, and believe it or not, I do say a small prayer before I come up here to this meeting, before I say anything, with nothing else, to remind myself that I don't have all the answers, I'm weak in spirit, and certainly, the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom. But I am gonna reiterate my concern about your proposed ordinance concerning public comment, and I feel it puts more obstructions and more hurdles, impedes the public participation at a time when you should be trying to encourage it. And I would ask that you reconsider that before you take a final vote. I'm also gonna go back to my concerns about the open drinking on the streets, and that the borough needs some kind of container law, open container law, that is prevalent in most of the communities in Pennsylvania, including the largest communities where you cannot just walk around the street and drink anywhere you want to. And I'm hoping that there will be a bigger discourse, even with people who disagree with me, and that we can kind of come to some kind of a resolution that makes everybody happy, but at the same time, upholds, reinforces, or at least acknowledges, the basic values of this community, and most people in this community really don't appreciate having people under various stages of inebriation wandering around their businesses or their homes. We don't appreciate having to pick up open containers out of our lawns and off our sidewalks. And finally, sir, I'm going to ask you to reconsider the budget and to pull some of these items that you have, where you're subsidizing businesses through programs like the Market House and Main Street, where the taxpayers are being asked to subsidize businesses, many of which aren't even local. And so, you need to really examine and look at those things, and see where, where are we going with this? And why is it that these businesses can't stand on their own? Why do we have to give $40,000 to Main Street when a lot of what we see doesn't, again, doesn't, is not consistent with the values of the community? And, and it's Market House, if, if they can't break even, I don't think the taxpayers should be subsidizing it. I'm gonna thank you, and I'm gonna wish you Happy Thanksgiving.
Bill, can I ask, Bob's come up here month after month on that open container.
Yep.
Is there a way that we can finally get to the bottom of this and address it? Because I'm looking at a man going up during, I think we should call it sit and sip. It might be better, because can you imagine taking a child in one hand and a beer in the other, and strolling, and saying, we want the families to come downtown? You want the changes, then you have to let us know how you feel. But I'm getting phone calls letting me know that open container, people do not want the majority. So continue to call me and talk with me, and Bill, I really would like to finally put this to rest and, and really get into the, the long haul of it on about open containers. I don't know how many of you feel the same way. Carol, I saw your message.
Open container law is not on the agenda tonight.
No, I know it's not, Barb.
It's not on the agenda, Barb, but I thank Bill for allowing me to speak. Can I finish my conversation? We had that open, we had at the governance committee meeting, if you recall, we talked about it, and we had some people come in and talk about it. We can revisit it at the governance committee if you so desire. But one man's opinion does not make our rules. We have to have other people come and discuss it and get, do some research on this. So I'd be happy to put it on the agenda for the governance committee.
Yes, I would like it.
We can talk about it.
If that's where it goes, Bill?
We'll get multiple people's opinions.
Then that's where we should put it. Yeah, and let me know, and I'll be there.
Certainly, I'll certainly let you know.
A lot of facts have to be introduced on this open container.
A lot of facts we've not heard yet, yes.
Exactly. So Bob has been addressing it, he has reasons, I know, but I think people sitting here realize that.
It's not on the agenda tonight, there's no reason we even to talk about it.
I don't wanna destroy the businesses downtown, I just feel that it's not apropos when we say we wanna bring families down.
At this time, as, as chair ladies, I'm gonna remind us that this is public comment, and neither of you are public, so.
Yes, thank you, Bill. I'm passionate, yes, thank you.
I understand, I understand, but there is also a point of order. At this time, is there anyone online with community media who is wanting to participate and address council?
If you're joining us via Zoom, you're free to unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Yes, I'd like to address the council with regards to the last comment having to do with the open container. If that's gonna be put on the governance meeting, can we make sure that the public in Hanover is actually, I'm sorry, I have to tell my name and force my own little stage track. My bad. Al practice, it's Audie practice, Smith. Anyhow, can we make sure that the whole area of Hanover Borough is notified of that meeting with regards to the open container? Because I think a lot of the smaller meetings that aren't on video and so forth, people don't know about necessarily, and aren't aware of the importance of those kind of items that would come up, and I think they would be much more willing to participate if they had a voice to be heard and knew ahead of time. Sometimes when you read down those short agendas, you don't really realize what's on it, and since you can't participate via video and you do have to participate in person, that does make it a little bit more challenging for people. So that would be my one request. As well as with the budget, will it be the full budget that is on display at the borough for review? Last year, I believe it was only a summary, and I'd like to request that the full budget be available for review for people to view at the borough.
Okay. Anyone else for public comment, online, or via telephone? Seeing none, I will close the first public comment, and we'll come back to it at the end of the meeting. At this time, we have a certificate of appreciation. I see Chief is with us, so Chief, how about you and I meet up front here, and Mr. Howard Billig?
Ladies and gentlemen, we actually have two retirements this year. First one just occurred in October, and that was firefighter Charles Hale Jr. He retired 33 years, nine months and 14 days of service. He had some departmental commendations issued, and some department unit citations issued. So now we have firefighter Howard Billig Jr. Howie is gonna retire December 20 of this month, or of next month, and he will retire 30 years, five months, and two days, if my math is correct. So Howie has had numerous citizens compliments letters sent in that were put in his personal file. He said two departmental unit, or I'm sorry, two departmental commendations and two departmental unit citations. They were for building fires or whatnot. The other thing that he got to share with us was 25 years of EMS as an EMT. Howie never really wanted to become involved in EMS at all, but we run medical assists, and we're EMT, so we do that. And as much as he tried to stay away, he got a unit, or departmental commendation from our former EMS chief, EMS captain, for his skill in cardiac arrest, where he helped resuscitate one of our citizens. And it was his golden hands, he said. So Howie, congratulations. You're achieving. Howie, I actually started, when I started, I worked with Howie for a number of years.
You did the best you could, couldn't you? There's only so far you can take. Hury, 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 I've always wanted to say that. Please let it be known to all that Howard Billig, for his dedicated service, served his Hanover Borough firefighter July 18, 1994. Wow, who remembers that? To December 20, 2024, has exhibited sincere dedication to the public interest of our community, and is hereby honored with this certificate of appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that he can speak, so I'm gonna ask him, he already knew it.
All right, so I appreciate your acknowledgement tonight of my time with you. It's been a ride, and I just wanna say that I appreciate your giving me the opportunity to serve the town in the capacity that we do. I care about it very much. I ask that, you know, as first responders, we do something that not many do. And I ask that you guys, as the council, take care of those guys, please. Give them what they deserve, and, and know that what they do is, is something that we put everything into. And we don't expect much, except to be taken care of, and our families. So please, take care of these guys, okay?
I hate when I get like that, but I care so much.
Good job.
As much as team, thank you. If it wasn't for guys like you, I wouldn't be here today.
Okay, with a tough act to follow, we have John Bean, a presentation for state certification of Employee Safety Committee.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I have a certificate to present, see me.
Oh, you guys surprised me on this.
This is a certificate from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Labor and Industry, Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the Safety Committee Certification. This was presented, or earned, on October 24, 2024. I'd like you to, I'll give you some background on this. After many years with several administrations and council boards, Amy Adler approached and asked me to head up the Safety Committee and go after the certification. The Safety Committee was established and approved by this council on April of 2023, if you remember that. Through monthly committee meetings, group training, grounds and building inspections, and reviewing accidents and injuries, the committee was able to apply for a state certification and received approval from the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry, October of 2024. Here's the partner, John Wick. Our workers' comp insurance premium is $250,000 a year. With this certificate, we will now save 5% off of premiums with a savings of $12,500 a year. And just to list a few of the committee accomplishments so far, we've had borough-wide trainings held for a safe driver class, a training for an active shooter, and Stop the Bleed class was offered, and then along with monthly toolbox topics and literature for each department to go over monthly with each other.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Time we could save money, it's a good day.
Thank you, I hear that.
You wanna sign it?
You wanna sign it?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, we will move into the consent agenda. Before it's moved, there, I have a note that there's gonna be two items pulled up for discussion, but let's start with the motion.
So love.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Is there anyone who would like to remove anything at this time?
Yes, Bill.
Counsel, phone?
Under, under E approved advertisements, the number two and the number three.
The 2025 Main Street allocation for $40,000 and the 2025 HEDC for, uh, 25. Is there a second to pulling that from the consent agenda?
A second.
Okay. Anything else to come out and speak about separately?
No.
Okay, point of order, we will handle the entire consent agenda by motion and vote first, that being everything except for EII and EIIII. All in favor of approval of those consent items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now we will have the discussion on the first of the two, 2025 Main Street allocation of $40,000. Would you like to speak to it?
Just that I need to know that this is, in other words, the advertisement is going in, Bill, for these amounts, 40 and 25,000, right? 40,000 and 25?
I believe so.
And then brought to the following meeting at the following finance in December, correct?
Who Finance can help me with that? I'm gonna make sure.
It's for approval and discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Guess what?
Yes.
So then Finance, we will discuss this?
No.
In the budget.
In December.
It already went through Finance.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
This is just the advertisement, right?
The advertise, the approval to advertise went through this past week through Finance.
Right.
So the advertisement is for the ordinance to be approved at the December 23 council meeting.
So it'll be approved next month, if you so approve it.
To Finance, it will return to Finance, right, Dory?
No.
No?
It'll just return to council because it's an ordinance that's, that only has, it's already gone through the, the advertisement phase by that point in time.
Process, okay.
And been approved, so it will be at the council meeting next month that you will finalize the approval, or not.
Okay, the only thing that I wanna add there is that this may be small amounts that we're dealing with, but we know we're financially, you know, we're on the wire, and we have to watch our budget. But I would like to see Main Street and HEDC to become independent on itself and be able to support itself. And I, I would like to know approximately how long they think it's going to be before they become self-sufficient. You know, we've had our roundabout with the library, self-sufficiency, but these organizations, when they're developed, have got to start to maintain themselves rather than depend, because Chamber of Commerce is not sponsoring Main Street anymore. And so I don't think that...
Why is that?
What did you say?
Why is that?
I don't know, why is that? Okay. Do you have an answer, Scott?
I don't know.
Okay, but they don't, they don't support, and we keep supporting. And we did discuss this before, and we said we would like both of these organizations to become self-supporting. So I just wanna find out approximately how long this is gonna take, where they have a vision for self-supporting, and about approximately when they feel they'll be able to, to do that.
Well, Mariah's brand new, and we haven't really heard from her. I think we need to give her, Mariah, is she not the head of the Main Street? We gotta give this girl a chance.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I mean, we need to listen to her before we start.
Right, and this is what I wanna do with Mariah, but we had somebody there before her, and we had brought this up, and it doesn't change, it's just that it has new leadership.
Well, that's great.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying it's...
I mean, that's fabulous.
No, wait, Carol, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I agree with you, but we should have some idea for our budget and our construtions that we have right now, to find out what ideas they have in place, and if, I do feel that Mariah's good, but she should have some idea of where she wants to take this in self-supporting, that Main Street.
So, um, Margie, is she, is she, can we get her to, at another meeting to?
Yeah, I'd like that.
She's been at two of our meetings so far, in the five months that she's been here?
Yeah.
So, yes.
I mean, with the, like, with what she's been thinking about, I don't remember, was I sick though at that meeting?
I'm not sure, she was at, remember, she was at our budget meeting?
Right.
She's been at one council meeting here, and I'm not, I can't recall right now which council meeting it was, it was last month or the month before.
Yeah.
I, I think we have to be, I think we have to be a little cautious about those organizations.
The what?
Cautious, both of those organizations work for us. Both those organizations work as, as proponents of the Borough Council.
Then why, why did we bring up, Barb, that we want them to become self-supporting?
Can I, can I just finish my conversation? Just finish? So both of them work for the borough, to make the borough a better place, to improve the quality of life, to improve things in our community. So I think we have to be very cautious with cutting them off of money, because they, they work, they do good things, it's like cutting off your arm, because they do good things for us. So I think we have to be very, very cautious, and maybe there are other ways we can look at money, as opposed to a little $40,000, it's not a lot of money, but if you're looking for money, there are other places to find 40 and $25,000 in some of the other budgets. So I think we just have to be very cautious.
Why was I led to believe that this should be self-supporting? This was discussed prior, and now it changes in the middle of the stream. These organizations were developed, okay, with a strategy to become self-supporting. I'm simply bringing up wanting to know... I want Main Street to be successful and the HEDC. But when we, when these organizations were put into play, they said, "We're only going to pay for it for a certain period of time that they should become self-supporting." I simply want these answers to my questions and especially for my people who ask me.
As chair, it's my responsibility to interject that we are here to conduct business at this point in time. We have all of our committee meetings leading to this point every month to have these discussion-type items. So, I'm going to have to ask that the conversation cease. And if there is a motion to approve those two items, we need to hear it now. We can move on.
I would make a motion, no disrespect to Mrs. Phong.
That's fine, Scott.
But the young lady that was here, that heads Main Street, I can't think of her, Mariah, was here two-ish months ago, and she had a very good, I don't know, 10 or whatever page strategic plan, including funding, that she presented to us and gave us all a copy of it. And I actually looked at it tonight for a different subject, but I know we kind of got on a faltered path a little bit there for Main Street for a while, but I believe that the new leader is doing a good job, and we have a lot of upside potential, and they're the ones that are literally driving the recovery of our downtown, which, to Darlene's point, adds significant increased revenue in terms of taxes to our borough bottom line, if you will. So, this is all good stuff, but I think to Bill's point, this is wage tax and property tax. To Bill's point, we've been through this before, two-ish months ago. She did a good job. If we want to have a focus group review of this again, I would be okay with that. But I don't see a need to hold it up this evening because at some level, that also sends a bad sign to our employee that we don't, we don't trust them.
Does she get a paycheck from us, then? Another word, we hired her and she's been writing her a paycheck.
Truthfully, I don't know who she gets paid. I know we pay for her.
She's paid by Main Street. She's a nonprofit, it's a nonprofit organization.
What'd you say, Chuck?
Both Main Street and HEDC are nonprofit organizations.
Right, so we, they are receiving a paycheck from us that she had in.
No, no.
No?
No.
No?
They don't work for us.
We just subsidize their budget.
We're helping them out.
We donate to them.
And we donate, and we donate due to what?
Well, we subsidize their budget and we drive their priorities. But I don't think this meeting is the form to have that discussion, not to be rude.
All right, where do we take this, then, and when do we have the next meeting on the discussion of this?
I would default to the president or the manager to decide how to handle that.
I think we should be settling this once and for all to decide, you know, which direction we're going. If we're going to continue to subsidize, then it should be widely known and not voiced as it was back several months ago that, yes, we want them to become self-sufficient. I'm so confused, Bill, because we seem like we're changing things in the middle of the stream, and I just want to know where we're headed. I mean, I get asked questions, and I can't answer them.
Okay. I think I'm going to take your second, Mr. Kress, and make it the motion. I will now take a second for the motion to vote one, including items EII and IIII, as we've been discussing. Is there a second to that effect?
Yeah, I'll second it. Sure, I'll second.
Thank you. Any other points to bear on this issue?
Yeah. I would vote for Mr. Kress's IIII.
Okay. It's been moved to second to approve the two items that were excluded from the original consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
No.
One no, two no? Any other noes on that side? Noes on this side? None? The motion passes eight to two. Turning the sheet over, we will move into Standing Committee. Governance and Policy, Dr. Rupp, take us away.
Okay, sure. I think in your packet was the Resolution 1423, which was amended. I just want to preface the comments about the ordinance about public comment. All it is is simply a, like a procedure thing, how we're going to do it. In no way in the world does it cut down public comment. No way in the world does it say that people can't comment. We have two opportunities for public comment, and it basically just, if you look at it, basically it's just a procedure as how we follow, how we do public comments. So, we have a sense of order at our meetings, and we have a sense of decorum. No way does it cut down what people can say. They just have to, the first one should be towards the agenda, second one can be anything. And we did add a part about the executive session. And prior to that, let me go back, there was one, a couple people had some concerns, and I validate your concern. When somebody comes and says stuff, and we just sit here like bumps on a log, should we say something? In the, in the change, it says, "At Borough Council meetings, the President of the Council shall be the spokesperson for council and will generally refer citizen concerns to the Borough Manager for research by staff and reporting back to the council." So, they aren't just going to come and say stuff, and we don't respond. The person in charge will refer it to the staff, the staff can respond, so that they do get their questions answered. I mean, people come, we want to have their questions answered. We want them to come, we want them to answer their questions. So, that's in there, and the only other change that is in there is, can't find it right now, I can find it. And you'll have, we ought to vote on it now. We can vote on it some other time, somewhere. There's something about, oh, it just says, the thing was added, was recommended by Bill and by Tim. Confidential matters that are explicitly permitted by the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act may be discussed by the council in executive session. In-person attendance is required for participation by council members, and the use of electronic devices, specifically electronic correspondence, recording, or streaming during these meetings is not permitted unless reasonable accommodations are requested in advance. So, there was concern about accommodations for people who might be ill. We would make those accommodations. So, it's really just, just kind of a process as to how we're going to run public meetings. It's no, no thing bad about public meetings, just a process. So, I bring to your attention tonight, if you want to vote on it tonight, if you want to think about it, and vote on it to the next session, but we've been sort of screwing around with this for a while. It's sort of time to do something with it. So, it's up to you.
Barb, I would like, Barb, I would like to see this...
No, 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 I'm, I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm taking that as the motion?
Second.
Sure.
Second. Now, discussion.
Yeah, I think we have to discuss this more. I know I do. Under public comment, we use Robert's rules, and people, the majority of the people that are in this town feel that they're being shut out, and we have to respond to them. And what we are so afraid of, we sit there and we say, "Let them talk," but they don't want to just talk. They want to have some type of communication with us at the table. And this is why you see a lack of people coming to the meetings, because they feel that, you know, they're not being heard. They want that two-way conversation. I don't see anything wrong with it personally, and I think we should. You know, West Mannheim, if you check with FOB, they have an hour before the meeting that they discuss everything openly. I'm for that. I'm for being at these meetings and doing what is right for the people for as long as it takes. But when you talk about protocol, sometimes we use protocol to quiet the people, and I'm not for that. And as far as the executive session, we've allowed the phones in there, we've allowed them to sit there. Someone's absent, they can't make it, the phones are used then. I don't know. Scott, what, what do you think? Can I have your opinion?
Well, in my mind, two, the two things are two separate...
They are issues.
Discussions, A and B.
Yep.
So, I think we need to keep them that way. I thought we were on protocol for public comment.
Okay. You want to handle that?
Well, I think we need to put that to bed before we get to item B. President Ricard, your opinion?
It's under the same resolution, correct?
It's all together.
Yeah, so, okay.
Are you taking them in at the same?
I'm taking both at the same time right now.
Okay, all right.
So, are there additional comments?
Well, I disagree with, in my mind, item B was sent back to committee for further policy development, and I've attended the committee meetings that Barb runs, Dr. Rupp runs, I should say. Well done, but we hadn't come to any resolution on point B, in my view.
That's why I came back here. I think, I think we said we couldn't decide, that's why I came back here. Right?
All right, well, then, I'm confused because my understanding is it comes from committee to here for approval. Maybe it's back here, then, for redirection.
No, if you remember, our committee, we couldn't decide, so we said we'd give it to the council, because we couldn't decide, so we give it to the council. So, that's sort of where it is.
Okay, so, we're back for redirection or less?
That's sort of where it is.
Okay. Then I concur with, we're here for, we're on the same page.
I think so.
I apologize.
No problem.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on it before I call the motion or the vote?
I think we need to clarify what we're voting on, to be honest with you.
You're voting under, on the Resolution Number 1423, amending the rules of public comment, which is included in your agenda packet. As presented.
Right. I honestly, personally, as a council member, cannot see that you can shut us up when we have questions during the meeting. They may appear...
Well, I don't know who you're referring to, it's you, ma'am, but it's council.
But, well, they appear, and there's questions.
This is a council rule, not a individual rule.
Well, I think that we're going to have to relook at that, Bill, because really, there's too much at stake here.
But you've made your point. Right now, I have to call the question because it's been moved and seconded.
Okay.
So, all in favor of the consideration, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Show of hands for noes. One, two, three, four, five, five, four, five against. I guess we will not take action on that this evening.
You calling there?
Yeah, it's calling out.
Yeah.
She'll be sad she missed it.
Boy, she had her moment. She really did. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Finance and personnel, Mr. Kress? See if we can get through that without fighting. Come on.
Yes, sir. Consideration of a motion to ratify the following building construction change orders for 33 Frederick Street. Number one, change order number eight, $1,017 for change to door hardware cylinders cores from Best Coremax to Corbin Ruswin. Number two, change order number 11, $836 for addition of two exit signs to the community room as per RFI 032. Number three, this one's in our favor, change order number 10, in the amount of $1,669 for deletion of two HSS eight-by-six beams and four antenna posts. Number four, change order number 13, $2,211 for concrete floor prep and to secure files, 044. Number five, change order number 14, $3,206 for installation of a two-foot-deep-by-five-foot, six-inches closet in the Borough Manager's office. Number six, change order number 16, $3,074 for replacement of doors C2 and 031. And number seven, change order number 18, in our favor, of $3,190 to revise exterior lighting.
As chairman of Building and Grounds, I would like to make a motion to approve Mr. Kress's request, and to summarize it, I think they're doing a really good job because the net of this financially is plus $5,000.
Okay, Mr. Kress made the...
Adding the pluses and minuses together.
All right, Mr. Kress made the motion, I'll accept Mr. Rollins as a second. Discussion on this side?
I would just like to make a comment. Moving forward with this, I think we need to be careful. I know there's money allotted to this project. I understand that there's money allotted to this project, but I think moving forward, in case a catastrophic event happens that we come across, we need to be a little careful of if something can wait, you know, because if we go through all this money and then all of a sudden, you know, hypothetically, a roof caves in or a hole falls in the floor, now we're not going to have any money to fix it. So, I'm just saying, moving forward, if we could just kind of keep some of this money in reserve in case we come up with a problem in the future. That's all I'm, that's all I want to say.
And I have to agree with you, Carol.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Number two, consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of the 2025 Hannover Borough Budget for Public Inspection from December 2nd, 2024 until December 13th, 2024.
No motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Management Reports, it's my pleasure to remind everyone that the Christmas Parade is November 29th at 9:00 a.m. Christmas tree lighting is November 30th at 6:00 p.m. We have free parking pretty much now to the end of the year on Fridays and Saturdays.
I just want to thank the high school classes, Hannover High School, Mrs. Eiler and Mrs. Smith. No, we had 27 kids painting windows downtown on Monday as part of the Christmas committee, and I would encourage anyone to get involved in a Christmas committee. We're looking for volunteers all the time. So, sign up, Grace. So, you know, sign up on that Christmas committees for your input. We need all the ideas we can get, but I think they did a really great job, and they were super kids to work with, so thank you.
We're going to sign up.
I'll tell you afterwards.
Dr. Rupp, our building at 22 Carlisle, where the electric map is and so forth, looked great. Thank you.
The kids did a great, they did the best job ever. Best job ever.
Okay, so, sometimes the responsibility of the solicitor at these meetings is very necessary, often, or every time, I guess I should say that. Our solicitor, since we had a tie vote on a resolution earlier, has done a brief research and determined there may be a way that we can move forward.
Well, actually, it complicates things further, but I'll tell you what the rule is.
Of course.
Right. So, if a tie vote occurs at a meeting when the mayor is not present, the matter shall be tabled to a special meeting to be held within not less than five days, no more than 10 days, as set by president of council. And the mayor shall be given at least five days' notice of the meeting, at which time it will be the duty of the mayor to cast the tie-breaking vote. So, I think one way, like a reasonable way around this would be for, because it was a tie vote here, is for the motion to be amended to table it to a future meeting.
Sure.
Second.
Well, the person who made the motion should...
I could make that motion. Sure.
And your specific motion is to table the resolution.
To table it till a further meeting.
And your specific second is to table the resolution, and we should not need to discuss it, should we? So, the motion to table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Motion to table carries. Thank you. All right, we'll open us up for our final public comment portion. We have Sandy Mau to address council.
Sandy Mau, general delivery. I just want to follow up on Mr. Holt and Mrs., or Ms. Copper Smith's concern over the open container policy. The following is an example of...
I just can't hear you.
Is an example of what happens when a municipality...
Move the microphone closer, please.
When a municipality embraces alcohol and drugs in order to balance their budget. There is a male, who I'm sure you all have seen, who rides a bike around town with a large, rather large can of beer in a water bottle slot. He's been notorious for sitting outside of Clark's Shoe Store and enjoying his beer. He comes and goes, and he's back, and he's at the library. He had come to the library to speak with a certain employee. That individual wasn't available, and he was kind of very upset, and she's the only one I speak to. She's the only one who gets me. So, a little later, he's angry out in the atrium, and he makes the following statement. "I have friends, and I'm going to have those friends descend upon this library." He made good on his promise on Saturday, to the point where I believe the cops had to be called. Fortunately, I wasn't there. I came in a little later, and the residual was still there. You were given a warning the day before. little later, and the residual was still there. You were given a warning the day before. It was simply dismissed. Fortunately, I missed all the fun," a phrase used by employees. Well, most of it. Now, why was his announcement not taken seriously? Why were the police not contacted to be on alert for a possible incident at the library on Saturday to prevent any disturbance that could have resulted in the destruction of property or injuries to patrons or staff? It's a very poor reflection of certain members of this Borough Council that have engaged and embraced these characters as informants and waging warfare against this library, in particular, those of us who do not support your lack of transparency.
Ms. Mau, do you have other points to address?
One more. "Your steadfast refusal to answer legitimate questions of this governing body continues to sow doubt and suspicion."
We also have Mr. Holt this evening for a second. I address Mr. Holt.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there is something wrong with restricting public comment and making people jump through hoops, fill out forms to have a first comment period where you got to fill out a form, you don't know if you're going to comment on a second period. I mean, I don't even know how that got started. But there is something fundamentally guaranteed to us by the founding fathers, and that's the First Amendment. And one of those is the right to bear our grievances, to bring our grievances for redress before the government. That's our fundamental right, guaranteed to us by the Constitution, not only in the United States, but the state of Pennsylvania. And that is something I will stand for, that people should feel like they can come here and be welcoming. But even just here tonight, hearing the discussion among the Council members, this is not a debate about structuring public comment and making it orderly. It's about control, sir. That's what it's about. And shutting people down when they feel like the chairman's had enough. "I don't want to hear any more public comment. People are being incivil," or whatever other phrase you want to use. You need to be careful how you're doing about this. I'm going to ask you. And, you know, I keep hearing people invoke the phrase "quality of life." That's a very arbitrary phrase. It's, I'm coming to learn to kind of have a, it's getting to have a bad taste in my mouth. Though, at one time, I thought it was a good thing. But one person's quality of life is another person's hell. And we can see that throughout this community. And we need to be careful how we use such phrases in justifying some of the things we do that don't fit with the underlying values of the majority of the people in this community. I thank you. I wish you a happy Thanksgiving. I mean, I hope many blessings come. And I appreciate your time and your patience in listening to me.
Community media, is there anyone online wishing to address Council?
If you're joining us via Zoom, welcome to unmute yourself if you'd like to address Council.
Audrey, if you can hear me, tell your mother I said happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Well done. Thanksgiving to all of you as well. But I would make sure that Mr. Holt, I concur with what he's saying in regards to the public comment. It doesn't feel like we'd ever get answers to some of the comments that we make. I know there isn't a process right now for a dialogue, but I think it would encourage more people to participate. And I think as far as the borough is concerned, we need as much participation as possible to make it better for everybody concerned, not just a certain few. So, thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, Audrey.
Okay. Is there a, anyone else?
Mr. Ricard, Mr. Ricard, may I say something?
Uh, why not? It's been that kind of night, right? Just get in line if you'd like to speak next. You don't have to fill out a ticket.
I'm Wendy Beckner. I live at 109 MacAllister Street. And this is the first time I've been to a Borough Council meeting in a year. And alls I can say is what I'm seeing tonight, until people's hearts change, nothing's going to change. Instead of going against each other, we need to work together. And there must be a reason I got a text today to come to this meeting. And when I heard about the Christmas carols, I've become a new believer in Jesus Christ and what he's done in my life. We need to spread the word of peace and joy and love for each other. And the only way we can do that is to work together. And I see so much back and forth. We need to work together all as a community. I've been in Hannover all my life, growing up here. I see what's going on around my house, and it's heartbreaking. I clean up containers and other things behind my garage every week. Our community's in trouble. And the only way we can make it better is to work together. God is watching. God is listening. And God's hand is moving. It's time to choose which side we're going to be on. Are we going to come together? Or are we going to let one person's opinion decide on which Christmas carols we sing? Because without Jesus, we wouldn't all be together spending time with our families at Christmas. Everything's materialized now. Let's come together for the love of each other and work together. That's what we need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricard.
I just have a simple question. I'm Paula Charms. How do you address public comments? When somebody brings up comments, how do you address them?
First off, since you're relatively new to us, public comment is comment. It's not a public question. So, there are oftentimes, I think people have an unrealistic expectation that this is question and answer period. The Borough building, by and large, is open five days a week from 8 till 5. You have a question. Most times, people don't come in and ask their questions then, so that we can responsibly address that through the professionals who are tasked with distributing that information. Instead, it seems as if we have a number of people who come to council meetings and portray maybe misinformation through the form of a question, so as to create negative feelings, perhaps dissent or questions. We take that information then, and if it's legitimate, we'll distribute it to our Borough Manager, who is here, taking notes, being attentive. I'm taking notes, being attentive. Council hears you. So, as to when it becomes an issue that we eventually vote on, they know what your feelings are. But our government doesn't move immediately. Our government doesn't move on the vote of any one councillor nor any one comment. We have a process by which we do this, and some of us take it seriously.
I hope you all take it seriously.
I do, too. I do, too. Thank you.
Some of us take it seriously.
Public comment will be closed at this time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
We're adjourned.